This is a planning board meeting on November 6th, 2014. And on the agenda, we've had some new business and our new visitors would have a little bit of patience with us, could just like to help out a fellow who's been working through an application for us for several months now. We'd just like to sign some my rights to him and send him to bed. He's not a happy guy. The movement's gone up first.
Do you think you bring one?
You know, I have experience. The three is a... We have five documents, so the three is a court. I'm good with that. We have to sign off. So maybe let's a four of us sign this and one is an author. I guess all four of us can sign. That's why we have all. Thank you, Brenda. So there were no additional... So John has added the note for fire protection. Stay in all houses within 12 acres will have individual fire suppression sprinkler systems that meet state and local standards for installation of single family homes. That's item number 22. In addition, these 23 and 24 houses are... Item 23, lot clearing and construction debris. All stumps, brush, and other vegetative debris from the clearing of land will be removed from site. All construction debris will be collected and be removed from site. What happened to TOPSA? Didn't we have a stipulation on TOPSA?
State on site.
I don't mind outside. I mean, like, keep the top those on site, but... Yeah, I would, but I'd like to see it in writing. If you and Ken can agree that that will be amended to this. I thought we stated that question.
Oh, we definitely asked about that last time. Chip kind of said you could roll it in with the other debris stuff, just because we're running out of room on your document, but it'll definitely be in there.
Well, as long as Ken and John and the board have an understanding of that, we can proceed.
And the other change that I saw was the original number 12 has been changed to become number 21. 12 has a single sentence as it was before. The rest of it had to change and now becomes 21. Just to make that clear, that's different from what we looked at before.
Right. That stipulating that the drainage is been 20 foot wide on the entire north west side of this subject parcel will be set aside as the drainage is done, but the control of drainage will not be maintained by 12 street acres on this situation. Item number 24, road inspection. Try to issue a certificate of occupancy for each dwelling unit. The road commissioner and road association representative will inspect and determine if the road is in its original condition and notify the code enforcement office. Okay. You have a way with English. You have a way with English. No, I'm just in its original condition and I wrote you something pretty in there. That's all right. Where do you want to put this, John? Name the date. No, we all four of us should sign. Thank you very much.
Is there an official? There is. I can go on without them.
I must see this issue coming down the road. Why, what's the policy?
Well, defines all the different policies. It swirls 50,000 years.
Thank John for a nice process. He worked well with the road association. We can move to some new business. First item, which is Ms. Dale Barrows, 360 Youngs Ridge Road.
It's 630 Youngs Ridge Road. And I truly appreciate the opportunity to come before the planning board this evening. I do have a special exception request. Back on October 18th, unfortunately, my schoolhouse was severely damaged by a vehicle driving right into it. It was due to a distracted driver. There were no contributing conditions that could have avoided it or made it any different, but it was totally accidental. It was unintentional. The family is a local family. They feel terrible that the schoolhouse has been severely damaged. And I'm here this evening in hopes that I would get approval for an exception for setback rules. I had the pleasure to meet with Kenneth Paul, our code enforcement officer, a couple weeks ago, and he had immediately gave me approval to go ahead and repair the schoolhouse, but unfortunately, because of land use and the degree of damage to the building, that I would have to comply with the current setback rules. I'm reluctant to do that. The Little Red Schoolhouse has been around for decade after decade after decade. The Little Red Schoolhouse is right in the opening statement for my deed for the real estate that I purchased. It is interested in a certain water parcel with buildings thereon, one building being known as the Little Red Schoolhouse and the other building being the residential home. I'd originally bought my home from Jim and Ed Nicholson. I'm not sure if any of you remember them. The Little Red Schoolhouse has always been a landmark that has been well favored, well received by not just the abutters, but also a lot of the neighbors that are up in my area. My Youngs Ridge covers Wilson Lake, Horn Pond, Grady's Basin, and over the hill, Grady's. It has a lot of summer traffic up there for all the cottages and camps, and I'm hoping that I would be granted permission to repair the schoolhouse on the same location. I made the effort to go around to my abutters and local neighbors, asking their favorable position to also sign my petition. I have a petition here, signed by 26 people, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the repair of the Little Red Schoolhouse at the same location and not comply with current setback rules. The schoolhouse is located at the corner of Youngs Ridge and Buzzell Road. It's right there at that pinnacle. It's always been there. If this accident had never happened, probably it would sit there with no more issues for the next 100 years. The damage was due to a vehicle accidentally hitting it on Saturday afternoon. It was just 4:01. And I do have with me the sheriff's accident report with pictures. I also have contract for proposal for the repair of the schoolhouse. I also have with me, back in 2002, the Sanford News did an article about one of the teachers that was right there and taught at the Little Red Schoolhouse. Her name is Helen Wentworth, and it's a very, very nice article. And again, anybody is welcome to read this article. And it talks about what her life was like back then when she was teaching school. Another fact about teaching school, at the very top of the hill, the Horn family, who has been there for as long as I know, I've ever known them. Victor Horn actually and his brothers actually went to school right there at the Little Red Schoolhouse. It's a landmark that everybody associate with getting directions to and from to the cottages down on all the different lakes. It's very, it's always been very, very popular. I have as much information as I can. I have the goodwill of Richard Neal. Richard Neal researches Little Red Schoolhouses and was able to let me know that this is one of the last two remaining schoolhouses here in Acton. The other schoolhouse is the Lincoln School on the other side of Acton here. And from what I understand, it has an issue with the foundation sinking at the moment. But I would really love to have your approval this evening to have an exception to go forward to repair my Little Schoolhouse on the same location. I did meet yesterday from about just after 10 till a little bit afternoon time with the person's insurance adjuster that caused the accident. And when he was looking at the land, he'd had seen, had a chance to see the repair contract. And when I talked to him, I let him know that I would be coming here this evening to see if there was any possibility of getting an exception to not comply with the setback rule. And he is also very hopeful because off the top of his head, he said, if I was to pick up and move the schoolhouse to comply, it could easily cost me another additional $20,000 plus dollars. And that was just the moving. That doesn't include the new excavating and so forth and so on. If anybody here in the gallery had any positive comments they would like to put forward, I'd appreciate it.
Only positive.
Obviously, I support Dale's request. We're neighbors and it is an absolutely charming Little Schoolhouse and it has been there longer than I've been, longer than most of us. And it is just a beautiful building. I'd like to see Dale's request on it also.
Thank you, Ms. Dale.
I've lived in Acton since 1988. I virtually have walked by that schoolhouse. I won't say every day, but darn close to it. That schoolhouse is a part of not only my regiment, but my entire family, my kids, my grandkids. We have a large family and we have absolutely loved the experience of having that historic value of that building where it sits and what it is representing as it stood before, unfortunately, it was damaged. I personally, although I don't even want to consider having the building torn down, I personally cannot see that building relocated and have the same impact that that building is having in this town for decades and decades and decades. I can only say that for this particular instance, I cannot personally understand why this building cannot be repaired where it is and made to be what it was before this unfortunate accident.
Thank you very much, John. And I feel very strongly also that to move it takes away from the special effect that it has. It deteriorates the authenticity of the building, and I appreciate your comments very, very much. Yes, Richard?
Yeah, I think everybody knows me, Dick Neal. I'm also with the Acton Chaplain Historical Society, and both representing them and my own personal values. This is one of the things that I'm getting involved with right now is researching all the schools all the way back to the time the town was founded in 1830. I've set a goal that I'm going to be sitting down and reading over 100 years' worth of town reports to see the exact status of each one of these schools. But on this one here, when I heard about it, I immediately went up and had a seat for myself. And one of the first worries that I had was, oh, no. I just hope with this damage and whatnot, that the property owner doesn't say, oh, the heck with it, and has it torn down. Like Mrs. Barrows mentioned, we only have two of these old schools that could be recognized as the old one room schoolhouses. I'm working personally on the Lincoln School, trying to preserve that. And I told Mrs. Barrows that I would do everything in my power and capabilities to help restore this school also, because I just don't want to see it torn down. It's one of the things that I volunteered quite a bit at the school, and one of the things that I've learned is that in a school, they don't teach any of the kids about the old schools. And researching the information and stories that count from the old one room school. So I'm evolving myself these next six to eight months of researching and doing everything I can to turn around and come up with something about the old schools and Acton schools then and now, and be able to show people how things have changed over the last 100 to 200 years. So I'm in full support of what Mrs. Barrows is attempting to do, and I admire her willingness to not just take the easy way out and say, oh, the heck with it, isn't worth it, tear it down. And then once it's gone, it's gone. And this is what's happened to some of the other schools that were here. In 1830, I understand there were 13 one room schoolhouses. And it expanded into 14 for a number of years in the 1800s, and then slowly it started closing them out. And finally, in 1957, they built the consolidated school down on Evansville Road. So let's say. I'd hate to see it torn down and the added cost of moving it. It's one of those things, it's easy to say, oh, well, tough, but I hope you turn around and see some historical value in retaining this old building. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it very much.
I have two questions. One, how extensive is the damage? And two, is the repairs in any way making the property more nonconforming? Because if there's nothing extensive going on, then you don't have any problem.
If there was severe damage, over 50%? I would say yes. Ken?
She wouldn't be here if it was less than 50%.
Right, okay.
I think her estimate was over 70,000. Then we have it appraised at 5,000.
I have a question for Ken. We had a case, an applicant come before us recently on one of the lakes, and I remember it was clear whether one of the options that was open to them was leaving the structure in place and modifying the foundation, which I think was what their application was. It was unclear to me, I'll bring that up because there would be a corollary here, obviously, to this situation. It was unclear to me from that example whether that was within the purview of the board to grant a conditional use application in that instance, whereas the conditions of which would be leave it where it is and just eliminate.
With the prior one, the foundation, even a sonotube system, a frostbose system, would be a foundation. So the board would have the availability to relocate with that prior one. So the three reasons for relocation is it's destroyed totally, no matter how, it's removed by 50% of the market value, such as this case, or it's a new foundation of the existing. The board would have the preview to relocate.
But what about not taking that stance and just saying the applicant is permitted to repair it, is situ, so as not to increase its nonconformity? I see no prohibition, but I also don't see any clear declaration that we have that.
Are you talking about the prior one or this one?
I'm using, I'm trying to use the prior one as an example, just as a learning experience for myself and the rest of the board, whether we could have granted an application to those individuals to rebuild without moving the structure, which is essentially what Mrs. Barrows has come before us with a request.
If the board feels that's the best location on the site, yeah?
Mr. Vice Chair, can I, may I, just more comment? I think there's a big difference here in the case you are looking at in this particular case. This particular case, this building has not been used since 1954, and has never been occupied for any use since I lived up there in 1973. And in fact, according to the building code, it is not, can't be granted an occupancy requirement based on past use. So as things stand right now, that building cannot be used and cannot be occupied. There are two options. The board could say, as a condition, an unconditional use permit, that it can never be occupied, and in fact, it's not going to likely be occupied because of its location, it has no sewage, it has no electricity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So going that route, it removes it from a habitable structure. It's not a habitable structure, basically. It's a monument. So that's something the board to consider here that would make it very different from what you were looking at on the way. Having said that, Paul, you say that I'm in favor of this also, but I assume that is obvious.
Yeah, would it be amenable to those conditions?
Yes. It hasn't been occupied in the 34 years that I've been a resident.
And you had no plans to utilize it as a craft store or a...
No, or a bake shop or bakery or anything like that.
It would remain essentially as a historical monument.
Yes.
It would be planned more review anyways for change of use of a nonconforming structure.
I would feel if we were not increasing the nonconformity of this structure and giving a nod to its historical importance, I would like to hear some sense from Ken if he thinks we're laying down a new policy that is going to cause us to get in trouble here. I think this is rather a unique case, and I'll see what you think.
We've done plenty where we restored area damage from Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Sandy, several places that the pine trees wiped out the whole person's house. We've relocated it. This particular instance, I do understand the historical value of it, but the location to me, any accident at that intersection, if the board allows that to stay in that location, is opening the town to liability. That will be the cause, whether it is or not. It could be a totally distracted driver again, but somebody pulling out of Buzzell Road, not stopping, is going to blame with their lawyers. They're going to go back 10 years ago, the town had the opportunity to move that school back five feet, 10 feet, 75 feet, whatever it is, and clear that intersection for safer passage of vehicles. I mean, that would be my first aspect of it. Snow removal, there's a dozen reasons why having that relocated back. That's why the ordinance is there. The ordinance states the nonconforming structures, which do not meet one or more of the required setbacks, which is removed or damaged or destroyed regardless of the cause by more than 50% of the market value, that's when it's relocated with you guys. And it provided that such reconstruction replacement is in compliance with all the required setbacks. There is room on the lot. I understand it's always been right on the corner and stuff, but I would suggest that there's some room to move it back, whether you go back all the way. She had the opportunity to not go through this best possible location process and relocate it back. The setbacks are there adequately enough to relocate it back. It's not a hardship put onto her, I don't believe, if the insurance companies are covering the cost. I think 20,000, just jacket and move it, is astronomically high. That's not normally what we see on the waterfront homes when they are asked to pick it up and move it. when they are asked to pick it up and move it.
You can move the road. There's another option.
So it's not going to be totally rebuilt. It's going to be repaired with some of the original framing and framing to it?
Correct, correct. I've asked to try to be repaired as close to what the original schoolhouse was.
Yeah.
The footprint is not going to change. It's only twenty-four by twenty-four. There haven't been any accidents until this one distracted driver. And most people are cautious drivers. That intersection has been like that for decades on decades on decades. I mean, there's lots of intersections in Acton where you need to be a responsible driver. You need to stop and look and then proceed.
I think what Ken is pointing out, though, is the change of the liability. If there's damage in the future, it drags the town into it.
It's a society's issue, yeah.
So we would be liable for somebody hitting it.
How much further would it have to be moved back to meet the requirement? Seventy-five feet was what I was told.
From the center, there's a couple of site plans around here. It would only be fifty feet from the two sides to make it. But from that center of the Y, it would probably be about seventy-five. I think one side is, I just went on a map online to check. I had two feet on one side and three feet from the other in the two, the close points from the edge of the right of way.
I guess my opinion is mixed. I'll come to a conclusion, I think, at the end. But mixed in that, being an educator all my life, you know, I understand what we're talking about as far as old schools. There were old schools in the town that I first went to school at and then later taught at. That all being said, the idea of saving a house like this, to me, is extremely important. I'm not sure I'm so locked in to saving the exact spot. You know, the idea of moving a house seventy-five feet, to me, is not taking away from having that historical house in place, or, you know, that historical schoolhouse in place. The liability of it is, to me, a big concern if we weren't allowed to be back in the same spot.
I'd like to raise two issues and the ensemble brain power here, hopefully can help us come up with an answer. Number one would be signage might alleviate part of this problem in terms of a speed limit there. Also, or go slow school sign. Also, some language in the permit which would somehow rather indemnify the town from liability and put the onus of responsibility for a lawsuit on Ms. Barrows. I don't know how else to do that.
But how can you do that? You can't just declare it.
No, well, obviously Dale would have to sign onto this. I don't know how else to get around.
I think you can do that because you have, because you have, you can't sign away your right to do something, okay? Because you're already involved between your insurance company, basically.
What if there was a three-way stop at that intersection?
We're still giving you permission to do something that goes against the ordinance. You know, I mean, that's just basically, what you're asking us to do is ignore the law.
Yes.
And that makes us liable.
Could I ask a question? Has there been any liability on this property other than what we're discussing? Has this been brought up once as far as anyone saying anything about that building? Or is it okay?
The other thing is, why didn't the Ham's insurance company say, raise this issue? Because this is a real issue.
Yeah. That would be only my concern, just the society, how it's turned ever since that hot cup of coffee in McDonald's. Nobody's responsible for their own actions and their lawyers are going to sue everybody. As soon as there's another incident, the lawyers will be, there would be some knowledge that the board had the opportunity to relocate and did. Even if the accident was Young's Ridge both ways and didn't involve Buzzell. I mean, you had the opportunity in 2014 to do something. What are you doing on it?
This is being brought about because, from what I hear you say, there's fifty percent damage, over fifty percent damage? That's the whole reason this is being brought about? If there was not over fifty percent damage, we wouldn't be here having this conversation.
I'd just like to point out one thing. That we're saying, making the basic assumption that if the building was already seventy-five foot back from where it's located now, does anybody, code officer, think that that would have prevented this from happening?
This particular accident?
It may not have.
I would have thought so. If it was seventy-five back, it would have never gotten hit.
Because if you turn around and go up there and look, that young lady that turned around and come up and got distracted or whatnot. There isn't a mark on the road, or there wasn't a mark on the road. And she just turned around and went straight into it. And if it had been back another seventy-five feet, she would have still run it.
But it would be within the code.
Yeah, the liability for the town would be less, I would think.
And also, can we, if the code right here says that there is no, we have to prove that there is no other location on the property where it could be built, right? In order to be able to get...
Most of the ones that are damaged or they're destroying, if there is an area to relocate, you guys don't even deal with it. I, we work with them and I tell them, there's an area, and same thing I told you, there is an area to relocate this. The board is usually, this is a special case due to the historical value. But if this was just a camp on a lake, they would relocate it without even coming to the board because there's no way the board is going to allow it. This is unique. So she took the opportunity to come talk to you guys.
But can't be allowed.
You do whatever you want.
We can't go against the code, right? Excuse me? We have to follow the code, right? Because we have the ability to go against it.
There's always exceptions to a rule. Right, the digital, like, we... You and your neighbor, and your other neighbor, and maybe down the street.
But there's not like down the list. The list of items in which we're able to give exemptions. And we have to go by this. It's not just as much as we would like to see it there also, or like, you know, kind of go by our own opinions. Like, we have to go by the code.
That's what makes it tough. Is it permitting conditional use, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, even if we change the use where we're kind of knowingly putting an obstacle in the way of a car.
That would, it would be required for them to come back to the plane board anyways to change the use of the non-conformal structure.
Because it's still an accessory structure, right?
As long as it stayed, we have it assessed as a shed. As long as it stayed assessed as a shed, then they wouldn't need to come back. If they changed the use to, do you have craft shop or something like that? Somebody had said, that would be a change of use. Then it would have to come through you guys anyways. So any change of use, even if it was to be changed to a dwelling unit, it would come through you guys.
Oh, I see, they'd have changed it from a shed to a monument.
A monument.
But it's like, as an accessory structure, we have to go by these guidelines. But if it's a monument, then we don't necessarily have to go by these guidelines.
Because there's no word monument in the law.
I'm stuck on page five, reconstruction and replacement.
Yeah, that's where legal re...
I sense that we're in a situation where we'd like to help you, but we're bound by ordinance. The damn lawyer, like, I, it's too bad that lawyer that would bring that case is not in Washington, someplace where it could be of no use. I don't, I don't, I'm looking for help here, I guess.
It's tough because that's just a site walking, going out and take a look at it. But we all know where it is. We all drive by all the time. It all sticks right out, it's pretty clear.
And it's hard to believe that it costs twenty thousand dollars to move it seventy-five feet.
You know, what about this? Why don't we ask?
Why don't we just get some volunteers out, lift it up and carry it?
Why don't we ask these, in the interest of saving the historical integrity of this, I feel that the location of the building is as important as the field to the north of it, the open field that has been, I think it's been maintained over time, roughly molded.
Yes, every year.
That's quite a nice sweep of landscape there.
Thank you, yes.
Why don't we, in deference to Ken's concerns here, and what I sense to be the, well, my own concern here would be to enable us to legally, without triggering this liability issue, allow Dale to leave this in sight and, by the same token, not increasing this non-conformity. Why don't we run this by the town council and see if there's a path? Maybe here's a lawyer that wouldn't, would be on our side. To seek out a means to do this. Because I don't know if we can do it with a strict interpretation of the ordinance. I think we're kind of stuck.
That's a good one. I think that we could see if, yeah, maybe we just get the lawyer to say, it's not going to ever be terrible.
Maybe there's a way, there's a bit of law that we're not familiar with that somehow rather would indemnify the town from liability concerning historical, you know, buildings. This says, no, it's not on the National Registry of Buildings.
Yeah, exactly.
But it certainly has been recognized in Acton history books. And previously, that is an important bit of our heritage. And I don't know what else to suggest as a means to seek out a solution for it here.
Well, I appreciate the thought to do that because I don't know what my decision would be if I was not allowed to rebuild on the same site. The other thing that concerns me is the unfortunate timing of this accident. We're right into cold weather. We'll be having snow before too long. I need to do something about shoring up the inside of that building to, until I do get things squared away. I'm not sure how long would something like that take. Do you have any idea?
I think if the case was made, you know, adequately to this level, I think that could expedite that for, you know, months' time. I mean, how long does it take a lawyer to sit down and think?
Sometimes a long time.
It gets paid by the hour.
That's an open question.
Can it repair to seventy-five feet?
Is there a notion of how we might receive this toll?
Yeah, there is an alternate, there is an alternate solution that would work to the benefit of the town and leaving it on its current site. I've discussed this with Dale already, she's not the bearer, but she would prefer to go this route. The alternate suggestion would be that Dale be over a piece of land for a road connecting at a right angle into the Buzzell Road. Take that curb out of there, which is an ideal solution. It'll tell, it'll give you the T-intersection that you want for visibility, okay? Now, what would be involved in this would be that Dale would give the town a piece of land, right way, or a piece of property, and back with the schoolhouse to create a road that would intersect the Buzzell Road at a right angle. So the road would be rerouted there and back with the schoolhouse. Follow me?
Yeah, back with the schoolhouse, so it'd still need to meet the road setback.
That's another detail that can be dealt with, you know.
Depending on how far it was.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just putting you on a different course that would work to the benefit of the town. And then the decision ultimately would be Dale's, whether she wished to do that, or whether she wished to move it, or in the event that the lawyer says it's okay to do right where it is. Okay, I understand your concern.
Wouldn't it be more expensive to make a road, a whole road, than just to move a building back seventy-five feet?
All we're saying is that Dale would give the town this because ultimately the town will do this anyway, all right? Because you want roads to intersect right angles with each other. That's a very bad intersection because you have that very narrow Y there.
So then the town will own the building?
No, 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 no.
Road.
What I'm suggesting is that Dale convey to the town title for fifty foot strip of property behind the schoolhouse that would give enough space to come into the Buzzell Road at a right angle and reroute the road around the other side of the, around the back side of the schoolhouse.
Not to be disrespectful, but I don't like...
Still don't like. And also, I understand.
Charlie, you wouldn't, you wouldn't get away from the notion, as I'm drawing this anyway, you're perpendicular, you're doing a right angle off Buzzell, intersecting with Young's Ridge up the hill so as to achieve setbacks. But you still have the issue of setback with Young's Ridge Road?
Yes.
That was a detail you had worked out.
The issue, the issue that was raised, if you remember, was people, the person who ran into this was making a left-hand turn to follow up the healthy Young's Ridge Road, okay? If you go up Young's Ridge Road and continue straight, you go on the Buzzell Road, all right? So now we would create a T back there.
I'm with you there.
So...
Could this individual be sent to law school?
I don't play aware.
I'd ask, I'd ask a lawyer for help.
Ultimately, that, ultimately, that will be created there as a T. You know, we all understand that, but...
But you would still have the issue of setbacks that you wouldn't, you wouldn't be totally clear. You'd have to, you'd have to iron that out or iron it over or something with Young's Ridge Road. You'd still, you'd still be three feet off the Young's Ridge Road.
You'll be fixing intersection though. It's not as common sense.
You're no longer a direct shot. You know, if you reroute the road that way, then it's like somebody making a sharp right-hand turn into a stone wall on the road.
There is no, are there any stone walls on either side of the section?
Yes.
Around its corner?
Around the corner and right behind the schoolhouse itself.
It's all defined, it's all defined by stone walls.
It's all stone walls.
My imagination is really wrapped with this.
So move a building out, put a stone wall back there, or what? You have a safe rock.
Any other suggestions for the board? As far as the board's lack on it, I don't see one.
I think my main concern is as you're pulling out a Buzzell, looking up Young's Ridge, where you just have to slowly pull out into the lane traffic to really see what's coming back. I don't think moving the, moving the school seventy-five feet back, if you did, yeah, you'd have plenty of view. If you moved it back twenty-five feet, you're going to accomplish that. If somebody's going to drive straight in through it, they're going to drive straight in if you move it back two hundred feet. If it was moved back some distance, you'd at least get that right-hand view up the hill. You'd have roof, the snow removal in the winter. There's dozens of reasons why we have the setback and it would accomplish it.
It's too bad we're on television.
Somebody had one of these, the arborist's car, and they came up with another guy instead. So we almost made it.
I, this, this bit of vehicular work is, is, pushes my imagination. work is, pushes my imagination.
Can you say more about how changing it would affect the historical value of it or the
Ambiance.
The authenticity of the schoolhouse? It's a landmark. It's always been there. I know that's not a phrase people want to hear or anything like that, you know, but it's. I know you have rules. I know you do. And that's why I pushed to see about requesting this exception. It belongs right there at that pinnacle, right there at that corner.
The unfortunate part is that there was so much damage involved to the building. Otherwise it would not have, it would be an issue.
Right. It would be, just, yeah, take care of it.
Well, does it make sense to refer this to town council and see if there's a way to?
Send a motion to them.
First of all, let me take a step back. Is the board, is the board, if the town council were to come back to us with the notion that there is a means by which we could decide to allow Dale to leave the building in place, repair it and not increase its nonconformity, would the board be satisfied with that situation? Because that's essentially what we're, I mean, there's no sense maybe in pursuing the legal opinion of town council unless the board is on board with that probable outcome.
The other question I have was just from the road commissioners, like what their stance on it would be.
Are we good with that at all?
Go.
Tom or Richard, have you spoken to any of those guys? Well, one of the things though, I did Sunday afternoon, I took a ride out and after talking with Ken, and he was a little concerned about traffic coming out of muzzle road, trying to look around the corner of the schoolhouse where it's located. I felt that that was, you know, a safety factor. And going up and looking at it, it, to me, it's obvious that over the years, the road commissioners have turned around and kind of encroached a little bit onto Mrs. Barrow's property. And they made a big Y. Because if you go up there and you're coming up muzzle road and you go by the schoolhouse, it's all paved in front of the schoolhouse, but all of a sudden, you see where the road actually, if it went straight and in my own mind, to turn around and make things a little bit safer, I think. If there, like a white line that would define with the edge of the muzzle road all the way up to where it intersects with Young's Ridge Road, then all of a sudden, when I drove my car, I could see up, all the way up the Young's Ridge Road and there was no. So it all depends on how you come into that intersection. And people may have a tendency right now to kind of get a little closer to the school. And, but as you, if you go up there and you can see that that intersection has been paved over, so you got a big Y thing and it gives the drivers a lot of different opportunities. But I think if it was lined out there so that all of a sudden, you'd see where the stop line was and where the edge of the road actually should be. You know, that would take care of that. The other thing that, one of the thoughts that came to me is to preclude this happening again. I think there's room in front of the school, and I don't think it would detract from the school, that if some large boulders, four large boulders, were put right there. So if somebody did, you know, if they'd run into the boulders rather than going into the school. And the placement of the boulders again would be in this area next to the pavement, which is already, I think, extended a little bit further into private property. But, so we say a lot of little things here. I think everybody wants to accomplish the same thing, which is trying to figure out the best way to do it.
I don't know how relevant it is, but as I said, I've been walking this road a long, long time. Let's just take a 20-year period. In 20 years, I could count the people that stopped at that stop sign on one hand. One hand. So if something's coming down the road, and believe you me, I've seen a couple of good ones. It's interesting. Nobody stops.
It's a bad intersection.
I need to get a sense of the board on whether we should pursue town council with the probability that we may get an answer back that would allow this to proceed so as not to waste the town's money with an inquiry. We need to have a show of hands whether or not with the outcome, there's some probability that the outcome will be positive for Dale. But I need to know whether you want to proceed with it.
I don't think a lawyer is going to tell you, "Don't worry about it, you're not going to be sued." I don't foresee that, but.
Well, you might suggest some signage or something to help with the intersection. We feel that might partially alleviate the problem.
It doesn't change the ordinance.
No, it doesn't.
The law's assignment is orders. Well, it's, our assignment is the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, there's two different places to kind of refer to this instance. I mean, page four and page five. On page four, nonconforming buildings and structures, 1.4.1.1.1, maintenance or enlargement, a nonconforming structure may be repaired, replaced, maintained, or improved provided that the repair, replacement, maintenance, or improvement does not increase the nonconforming structure by approaching any further on any of the setbacks. Then on page five, reconstruction or replacement, like Ken was pointing out, is removed or damaged or destroyed regardless of cause by more than 50% of the market value of the structure. So there is a little bit of interpretation here as to how much the structure's worth because we have, the historical value of the thing is bound to add to the $5,000 if its value is a shed of a thing. To some extent, we came up, you know, there's.
Well, that's like looking at a boathouse. You don't look at a boathouse because it's right on the water. You look at it as a building. You don't look at it because it's by the water.
There is a little bit more sentimental value to a one-room schoolhouse than a boathouse.
Depends if you have a boathouse and you've been in that boathouse on that ledge, on that ledge for hundreds of years and you came up to camp and you came across, we hear the, we hear the stories all the time.
Yeah, no, I'm just, it does say in the, in the maintenance and enlargement because you could even argue that it's not being reconstructed or replaced because the thing isn't being replaced. And so, I mean, I guess there is some reconstruction, but it's being, you know, obstructed.
What we've done before, I've had people do is they hire a real estate appraiser and they look at the 50% of the removal and stuff like that. But when we were talking to the scope of the work and the estimate, it would have been just wasting our time. So the only alternative was to talk to you guys.
And that building's not on the historic registry, like they got the Lincoln Schoolhouse, one.
No, and I ran that with the DEP. That's not on the guidelines. Even though it wasn't in the book, I was just.
Well, it seems like it would increase the value of the structure and just, intrinsically. Well, we're having a discussion, Tom.
Tom, I would like to see if, perhaps if you pushed up to the selectmen to see if they could get a different interpretation. But I'm not convinced that that would change my opinion based on where the house still sits. I don't know. I'd have to wait to hear. I couldn't make that determination at this point without hearing what the lawyer would have said.
Yeah, I also think it would be a good idea to, at least pursue other people in the town, the selectmen, and see what they think.
Well, it's the town council more than anyone.
Yeah, I wouldn't go to the selectmen.
I don't know exactly what it would cost. We're not authorized to call and talk. They have to give us permission to do that.
Because the camera's on?
No, we can't.
We have a line for consultants.
You do?
You can do it.
Okay.
I use your line.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem.
Well, let's just, if, I want to just be clear, before we make that request, does the board, is the board amenable to consulting our town council on this to see if there is an avenue that would, that would do away with the liability issue and allow us to proceed with it, with a review of this, allowing rebuilding in its existing site, not to, so as not to increase its nonconformity with some conditions which would greatly restrict and have in writing, finally, its future use. Is that?
It's worth asking about, but you're trying to turn a reconstruction project into a maintenance project. And if we could do that, then we'd do it, right?
Yeah. Well, I don't want to get too picky on about.
Well, if it were maintenance, they'd be allowed to do what they're asking, but it's not. It's fine that way in our ordinance.
No, I understand that. I understand.
Go ahead and ask.
Well, and I'm just going back to the language here for a minute, just, fifth line down under page five, 1.4.11.3. 50% of the market value of the structure before such damage destruction or removal may be reconstructed or replaced. Doesn't say shall.
Provided that the permit is obtained.
Right. I'm just saying, it doesn't say shall, it says may.
But you didn't finish the sentence. What it's saying, you may do.
We left the call for two. That's okay.
Well, this is why we need lawyers.
Yeah.
I don't want to beat this to death, but.
I think we know what the board has to do and we're just looking for an avenue to do what you think we have to do.
We don't want to be stepping on your toes here and saying foolish.
This is all yours.
Foolish. Is that like Kipper's name?
A thousand miles.
I don't want to be saying foolish precedents for policy in the future, but.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I haven't read the code in a long time. I used to be a member of the board. My recollection is that you have set forth in the code, if you still do, a set of lines saying what you can grant a conditional use permit for.
Yeah.
Okay. Is this a permitted conditional use or not?
Well, this is a nonconforming use, so we have to find the best possible location.
Yeah.
I don't think that it's condition use. It's true that it was a condition use quite a bit, but we don't go through the standards or anything.
Right. It's, it's process the best possible location.
If it was a condition, you should have a better opportunity because it does talk about historical.
Yeah.
Through the standard criteria.
Well, let's, let's pursue some legal help, too. Does anybody? Yeah. Board through, through the help of Brenda and Ken will make a legal inquiry as to whether or not this building could be repaired whereas it has greater than 50% of its value in damage and remain in its existing location on the site.
To be brought back to us for review?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the review part is in here.
How was it, Dale? Thank you, folks. Thank you, Dale.
It is, oh, thank you. Only because I've never proceeded with anything like this. So from here, you're telling me you're going to the town's legal counsel?
Yeah, yeah.
And how will I know what the outcome of that is?
If you give your contact information, if she doesn't already have it to Brenda.
I'll review it with you, Brenda, okay?
And we would have a meeting to discuss that as well, so. Are you a resident of Act 8?
I certainly am.
Good.
Not that I know of.
I've been here 34 years.
Well, it's nice to meet you. It's, it's nice to see that someone has an interest in our heritage so as to preserve a thing like that.
This will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Correct. So she will come back for the next meeting.
But we'll, we'll give you a call as soon as we get word from town council and we'll.
Yeah, because the paragraph does kind of suggest that, it doesn't suggest that we can break the rules, but it does suggest that no matter what you do, you can't at least increase the nonconformity, which you wouldn't be doing. And you can't also, because the structure requires setbacks, you'll not be, and you can't increase the size of the structure.
Right, those weren't issues, but when you look at the relocation on the next paragraph, it talks about what the board can consider. The size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for a soil erosion, location of other structures on the property and the adjacent properties.
So size of the lot.
And the septic in the block. That's what it gets her. She's got a good sized lot with plenty of removal. If there was restrictions back there.
Sell, Dale, sell.
Sell.
Sell. Could, could we help Dale through the agency of the CEO's office in not triggering this 18-month proviso man until we get word back from the legal counsel, until she has the information necessary to make a sound decision on this?
Because she's got a year and a half to get a permit.
It's a year and a half, Tom. She needs to fix it in a few weeks.
We'll be back in two weeks.
All right. I think we've done what we can, okay? Tonight.
Thank you. Well, thank you all.
Have a good night. Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did Dale give you some information or?
Thank you very much.
Buy that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not that I recall.
Thank you very, very much.
Jen's around and says she had old school information.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Dick. Thank you very, very much.
So I saw in another, I want to associate with you. Ben, when we called, but you thought you were interested in reasonable, because you have. They can't find it.
I have seen it. I have seen it.
Oh. I don't even know what it is.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Thank you.
We're doing stonewall management, if you want to stay.
No, 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 no. I got it.
Good stonewall management.
I'm managing my own stonework.
I can, I have a coffee or a can. Maybe make me a coffee. That's great.
I don't have any stories about that school.
Oh, yes. It's a really nice article. Really, really nice. The name doesn't sound familiar.
Juris, juris is, I don't know what it's drawn. Look it up in the phone. I think it's 2466. But they're listed in the Act of Home, they live over on Rin Road up in Gotham. And Helen just.
Helen just passed away three years ago.
Her husband?
In the year 2006.
Oh, my goodness.
And she is a figure of great stature. Sometimes you get a little bit of a story, but it's, and you have more allies.
Thank you.
That's all, James.
Very nice.
That's the problem. That's the problem, when you rotate alternates in the order between plants and, and sit at the table, and then lost them.
Only do it seven minutes, not... Okay. Any, any changes or conclusions or issues?
On the backside of where it says number 12, I have number 12.
Yeah.
I think we should add that 12 has been modified as an easy include as item 12-1.
Okay.
Just in case somebody's looking.
I think that we have to shorten these minutes, because that isn't what happened in the most minutes. You see what I'm saying? I could say that when you sign the law or know the things of difference than what was discussed at the last meeting.
Will they be itemized in the next seven minutes?
I can't remember.
I just want to make sure that it's clear if somebody's ever looked at this.
I just hesitate to do it like it happened last meeting, because it didn't happen last meeting. He explained at this meeting why he did that.
Brenda, could, in, by the same token, can we address the notion of Gavin's statement in the next set of minutes that item 23 shall include...
Should have included.
Should have included, and somehow that has to be done in the permitting language between Ken and John Hutchins.
Why not do there's a modification in what you're pulling out?
Yeah, right. Just that the stipulation was that no topside is to be removed from the sites.
No topside.
Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, they sort of hung with that.
Yeah.
Just kind of overworked it.
What should we do, minutes?
I think that's like with the year, you haven't said.
What should we do, seven minutes?
About me, what should I do, seven minutes?
Four, two, four, two, bro, I'll say.
All right.
Um, I have a suggestion on how we like to proceed with this running engine business. I, I'm opposed to doing this in haste and trying to meet some kind of a January deadline or any budget there about, it, we didn't have to meet a January deadline, and I would like to make a suggestion that we take the holidays and for the meeting, we'll discuss how to, how to proceed more, more in detail with your returns, and I would like to suggest that we take the holidays with a, with a direction that would be more refined by our next meeting, and not, not lose the work that's been done with this by, by coming to some hasty decisions that haven't been thought through. We all maybe ought to look the thing over again at some detail, and with Ken's suggestions in hand, move the thing forward at its, at the pace at which it's got, it's got involved. I just don't want to move basically on it and, and have people upset with it and lose the work that is, whatever.
I want to think about this and don't think of the word hasty.
What's that? It is hasty.
I don't think I put the word hasty in this. But I don't argue with what you're saying about that.
Well, do you want to see how tonight goes?
Frankly, no.
If it wasn't this particular best possible location, I'd have probably kicked it back a little bit or something, but where it was, an emergency or something.
Oh, no.
Because we were trying to keep the issue clean.
Another topic.
And the folks turned out to help us. Do you have some language to share with us? Oh, first of all, what is the sense of, of what the board would like to do with the stormwater business?
When, are you talking about now?
Uh, with my proposal, I guess.
You're supposed to put it off.
To, to, to study the issue in depth with some, with some, maybe some more refinement in terms of the direction that the board wants to take our refinements, that we'll, we'll discuss briefly at the next meeting.
There's something else at the next meeting, don't we, the resource protections?
Yeah, this would be a very brief discussion. Basically, how, how are we going to proceed on the agenda?
We still have to have it done, Tom, by the end of January?
No, that's what I'm saying, we should just write that concern.
We're going to forget it as far as being ready for...
Yeah, I, I think that haste is not productive to the life. I think it's an important bit of work and to try and meet an imaginary deadline that is not really a deadline. I think when the board has got its arms around this thing and, and we have kind of a consensus on how to approach it, you know, if it has to be redrafted, so be it. Let's, let's not throw the baby out of the hat. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I just sensed that it was enough division on the board to, to proceed with the thing immediately to try to get that line moved up. Would be kind of...
I've been working on three directions, just so when I can make myself do it, so I've been reading it a little more, and one direction I've taken, the hard direction, is just to try and get an outline of what's in it, so that we actually have an inventory outline without all the embellishments. That's the hard part, especially because I'm not going to do underlines and crossouts. I mean, I'm not going to spend hours trying to fit it into this structure. Can't do it, I try. I'm kind of outstuck. So I'm trying, experimenting with it to see if it makes any more sense that way. The other thing that I got in that search, the other direction I started and realized when I started taking inventory of what we already give permits for and what we don't, we are pretty well covered. We're covered with the non-conforming, with if we added a little line to our conditions, actually, if we just said what we already do for the non-conforming sites. We've got conditional use that we have a list for in shoreline that we can also make as our conditions, the separation of, you know, the runoff, and we've got site review is already covered, including phosphorus, and so is subdivision. So where we're not covered is what is permitted already in shoreline and in residential. So that's really all we have to focus on. We've got a great starting statement, it says that you can't let water go off the property, so all we really need to do is provide an outline of what they need to show to prove that they're not going to send water off the property. I mean, that's kind of an oversimplification, but that's the angles anyway. One angle is to go right back to the ordinance, and that way we don't even make it even need an extra permit, we just use the permits we have and add to what that permit needs. In other words, to get a, you know, you have to do your stormwater as part of getting your building permit, you have to do it as part of your conditional use permit, you have to do it, you know, so whatever permit you get, rather than make it a special extra permit, and that's one angle. We tried it with John Lopman, we got a little compounded in that, but I think I've got better sense now of what he was trying to do, and I think he started out right, but we compounded it afterwards by trying to throw in stuff that he seemed to be excluding, like phosphorus stuff, so it accidentally got attached to small residential properties and anyway, so that's what made it confusing. So anyway, those are the angles I'm thinking about, they're all worth thinking about, but as I did, it's just wordy. It's not apparently bad, it's just wordy, and I've been going online, and I keep looking up things like residential stormwater and seeing what ordinances are out there from here to Washington State, that is, and most of them look more like Portland's, they look more like the alternate thing in here. They start mostly with 200, you have to have 200 increase. That's the smallest one I saw, so like even Rhode Island, which has the closest to what we're doing for their guidelines, they start with a threshold for residential, this is for residential properties, with an increase of 200 feet of impervious. We start with 100, but then they quickly go to the, the formula of where you can have an inter rain or an inter rain, or they use that formula, and I thought somehow we did reject it, that formula, but if, if we want to use that, or just the language of separating the roof and, and the driveway from, you know, we might have what in the end sounds like, accomplishes the same thing, but with a lot simpler way of describing it to people. I don't know. Anyway, that's the angles I'm thinking about.
Would you take that into the, the, impetus for this came largely from PREP, you know, the Scatapur region's...
I'm not, I'm telling you what I'm doing.
What's that?
So I'm not doing any PREP stuff.
No, I'm just saying, the impetus to do this came largely from, from the Scatapur regions estuary's partnership, the concern being the quality of the Scatapur River estuary.
Right.
And the thresholds that they derive for their work, I assume were, had some scientific basis in terms of what the estuary could absorb in terms of runoff, so I, I think there was some coherence. If you go, if you, if you're digging, if you're casting that wide net, I'm suggesting that you might make, use a smaller net and just see what the case study was that this is based on.
In Southern Maine, the towns that are on the estuary, actually on both sides, they pay, they just pay, they make up the difference by paying, they have a fund that they put money into, they have a completely complicated and different structure than we use, they're not, they don't even include residential houses in there.
This is where the city of Portland is standing.
Uh, that's not, I thought you were talking about New Hampshire's estuaries.
No. Okay.
From the PREP area.
PREP is New Hampshire.
Right.
Right.
We have, we have waterships that flow into the, the semifalter.
I, I know that.
So what I'm saying is, the basis for the modeling that, what was the fellow's name?
Forrest.
Forrest used was, was derived from the thresholds of, of input that would be absorbed without, you know, sustainably by the Scatapur River estuary. So there, there was some reality, they didn't, they didn't just, you know, throw up numbers, it was based upon some modeling that the NIH and other...
But it is just a template.
But it's a template based upon science, is what I'm trying to say.
Right. None of the towns in that estuary have anything like what we're trying to write. There is no other model that I can find.
That's no reason not to...
Well, we want to do Darren.
But you're not using the same...
Big example we did.
They're not using what PREP, I'm not getting...
It's pretty similar.
All I said was I've been surveying, looking at all, at other small town ordinances that actually have ordinances for residential, because most towns do not have cover residential in their stormwater, they just do not.
The point that was raised in the PREP work was that that was, I think, the, amongst the top three or four endangered estuaries in the country.
Anyway, I don't understand what that has to do with what I was saying, really.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that you might, if you're, if you're looking at other models, you might hone in and it might be more succinct in terms of what we're doing to, to use the model from which Forrest's work was derived.
I'm using his model, I'm using this.
Okay. Can we go on to Kenny's proposed resource protection amendment?
Just backing up to the stormwater stuff, I tried just following the stormwater management from the 12th Street acres, the subdivision that was just done, looking at the calculations and stuff like that, it's pretty hard to follow. Whether we came up with a form or something and they just input the data and come up with it, it would be pretty, pretty tough for a homeowner or your average contractor to come up and calculate this area here, so, and I guess that's why they have engineers.
Yeah.
But that's a subdivision, so making someone do it as a residential, each residential do it, that would be crazy.
Right, and it was a small subdivision, too.
Right.
You know, just the road, the calculations, just coming up with the calculations that is game, it was difficult process, just telling people to, we require surveys all the time, tell them bring one of these into, but water not leaving, leaving a site that you have, so.
Right.
So do you have something, Chris, or...
Do you have it right? There's one right there for you.
Oh, I thought this was in relation to...
Correct, see?
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to take this up for the next meeting?
Yep, this was just for you guys to take, uh, home, take a look at, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And where, where is the sense that this needs to be considered coming from?
Uh, multiple areas, we've got landowners that can't do anything with their land, that's totally RP. We've got landowners that need to do 30% expansions that are in the middle of nowheres, except for this abus of it coming into the area. Several people are looking for abatements on their properties now, and that, that's one of the triggers. We've got a few letters that have been sent to the selectmen, same thing. So what this would allow is in the resource protection area, and it's allowed through the state, we've just never adopted it locally, through special exception, conditional use through the plan of which you'd be allowed to do a single-family residence and accessory structures in the RP. You guys would have the preview, obviously, once you take a look at it, there's no other place for them to build on the property, they have to be in this one area, it doesn't have steep slopes, it's out of the flood plain, and basically you guys would have the preview to look at it, tell them how to build the roads, how to do the runoff, where to build the property, it'd be a conditional use permit for you guys, and this is one avenue, it wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't have to get into changing maps and all types of stuff versus, I know last year, the January deadline or so, the selectmen were talking about making some changes in the RP, just taking it right out of there, so this would, this is a good medium, I would think, where it doesn't get into redistricting or anything like that, it just allows it with a conditional use.
I don't want to be negative right off the bat, but I, I do want to just point out to the board that a conditional use permit, if it came before the board, we do not, we can approve with conditions or disprove, so we're not, we're not being temesculated here if we did decide to proceed with this, we still have the ability to say no.
And I, I think the bigger area is, it got a little confusing when the resource protection was added a few years ago, but most of it is outside of the shoreline zone, that's the more of the trouble.
The connections.
Yeah, yeah. The RP that's in the shoreline zone, most of that's legitimate, where there is wetlands and docks and things like that, and that area, we haven't had much problem with, it's that new resource protection out of the shoreline zone is where we have most of the issues, because it's forested wetlands.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll look at all of them. Can this be, how would we arrange that, in the first item, new business? I guess.
Right after the lawyer's letter.
Something else, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who is our town council, Mr. Kent?
Lukowski.
I've got a couple I can pick, girl. He doesn't interest, the other one is the actual town council.
What's his name?
Joe would be the one who would call, Lukowski.
What's the other one?
Oh, I can't think of the guy's name, but that handles us.
Could you make a call also to, just to the element, to southern Maine regional planning?
For the best practical location question, or the-
Yeah, yeah. Actually, for both of these, I'd be interested to see what they, I don't know what they say. We haven't talked to those guys, I don't even know who's in that office now.
That's the tough part, I don't know who they're dealing with. I mean, there's plenty of the older people still there, too, but I think it's just a little far reach for them versus the DEP that drafted that ordinance.
Okay. Well, let's see what we can do with this. Most of the turn? Thank you, Mike.